This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you all for coming for this workshop session. The topic of the workshop is the reserve policy refresher. So we're going to review the reserve policy that you adopted back in 2013, 14. Do have a quick update on the finance department just to run through that before we get to the reserve policy and sort of a short presentation today. I've got about 10 slides, although I may, I've got one other document that I may pull into this as well that I'll want to refer to. But the topics, the reserve policy refresher with a quick update on the finance department. Happy to report that the city submitted its financial information to the state auditor's office by the end of May deadline. So the 2020 financial report has been submitted. The state auditor's office will be conducting their audit this year. It's a three-year audit. So sorry, I should have made that 2019, 2017, 2018, and 2019. I don't know if you've got any information about when they're arriving, but this is about the time that they should be showing up. So got that on your summer calendar. The finance positions, so I think Maria Swinger Inskeep has been hired. And I don't know whether Janice, you wanted to do an introduction now or whether she's been introduced, but she's the new administrative services manager. Micah Elliott, who was the accountant, one of the accountants, left the city earlier this month in that position, actually will be left vacant for a certain amount of time until some of the policies and procedures get established and Maria gets a chance to get a better understanding of the operation. So I don't know whether Janice, you wanted to do anything now or?
No, we're going to introduce her during the council meeting. So I think you did a good job, but yeah, we're going to introduce her officially during the council meeting, but she is here.
We'd all welcome you, Maria.
Yeah, so there she is. You can see her, she's been here three days and we have loaded her up. I will tell you, every day is just been full of stuff. So, and she's going to do great because she's worked in government, but we'll do the introductions at council. This is Paul's show. Go, Paul.
Welcome, Maria. On the investment side, we did have an investment mature in May. At the time, Micah and I spent some time with the city's investment advisor and decided not to reinvest at that point, partly because of the market instability and partly because of the anticipation of potentially needing some cash reserves. There's an additional bond that's maturing in September, another 500,000. So it's another area that Maria can cut her teeth on and get involved in the investments, the city's investments portfolio. We have put that money into the state investment pool. It's not sitting idle. It is earning, and the state investment pool was earning fairly competitive returns. Those returns have been declining though, pretty rapidly over the last several months. As you're aware, Teresa Johnson, TDJ CPA, Teresa Johnson's firm has been supporting the city in a number of areas. In terms of the operating support, she's been providing a lot of the monthly reconciliations, reviewing journal entries, bank statements, providing some support for making sure the internal controls are appropriately kept up. And then a number of larger projects in addition to putting together the 2017, 18, and 19 financial statements and supporting the preparation of those into the state auditor system. She's also been providing, as I mentioned, policies and procedure support. And in addition, doing a lot of work on other miscellaneous projects. The roundabout grant closeout is one of the areas that she's been focusing on. And then in additional areas in the capital side, the city's real estate excise tax, making sure that that's being accounted for appropriately. And then for the impact fees, there's some currency requirements. There's some requirements that that money get spent within a certain time period. She's been doing some research and some accounting to make sure that you're in compliance with the, with the currency requirements on those revenue sources. The budget process, questions? Nope. Budget process support, so that's me. I've been supporting the budget advisory committee. We've had a couple of meetings already and all these supporting your 2021 budget process, working with the budget advisory committee and coming to you with workshops between now and November. And then finally, on your agenda tonight, as well as an agreement that you approved in April as an alternative tax agreement with the card rooms. We've got an amendment to that agreement in front of you tonight for your review and consideration. And I've been supporting the city with that as well. So, so a quick update on the finance department. Any questions there before I move on to the reserve policies? If not, I'll get into that topic. As I mentioned before, the original reserve policies were established back in December of 2013 while you were working on your 2014 budget. And the original purpose was to allocate funding for a number of purposes. The, the primary one was looking at how you would allocate funding for the future payment of the sewer debt. There's a number of bonds that, and loans that the city had undertaken to both acquire and improve the sewer system. And the reserve fund was making the payments on those, on that debt. And so one of the issues was, well, how much do we need out of the reserve fund to pay those loans off? And how much do we want to split between the sewer fund and rates, sewer rates and the reserve fund and essentially a general fund surplus that had built up over the years? A couple of other things that were included in the policies, allocating funding for future equipment replacement, both for the general fund side, the general services side, as well as the sewer operation side. Capital, lots of discussion at the time on what your capital needs were and how much money might be needed for different capital projects that the city was anticipating needing over the next six to eight years. And then just general operating reserve policies, you know, how much do you need in your checkbook? How much do you need to have on hand? What's the appropriate amount of reserves for both your general fund as well as your sewer operating funds? So those are the original purposes of the policy development process. And this is what you came up with, what we came up with back in 2013, 14. So these are the categories, I'll be just walking through these. You had roughly $17.1 million in your reserve fund at the time. And so let's walk through each of these categories. At the time, the unrestricted general fund operating reserve, so this is effectively your working capital reserve, your checkbook, if you will. This is the amount of money you need to have on hand just to pay regular monthly expenses. Helps you accommodate seasonal fluctuations in revenues. Some jurisdictions are more dependent on the property tax, which just comes in twice a year. So they need to have reserves to help them through those times when they're not getting monthly revenue. The Government Finance Officers Association used to have a specific policy target for this of three to, two to three months worth of reserves. They still mention that, but they really more focus on look at your own situation, see what your own cycles are on your revenues and expenses. Most jurisdictions have stuck with the two to three months worth of reserves. Your policy set at three months or 25% of your annual expense budget. And at the time, that was $1.1 million. Revenue stabilization reserve, so at the time, the card rooms were more than 70% of your revenue base. And there was an understanding that that revenue base was, that dependency was a risk. And so decided that a fairly healthy revenue stabilization reserve was needed. And this is really to offset unanticipated and significant fluctuations in your revenue streams. And you set that at 100% of your annual expense budget. I'll compare, I'll give you some information on what other jurisdictions have in terms of their reserves in a minute. And you can see that, you'll see that that is a really healthy revenue stabilization reserve. Sewer utility debt service, so this, the discussion here was how much money do we need to set aside today, back in 2014, to pay the sewer utility debt? Assuming at the time that we established this, a $5 per ERU per month rate increase on an annual basis over the next five years. And the amount that that worked out to was $6.3 million. And effectively, that wasn't all to be spent at one time. That was to be metered out over a series of years. And between that and the revenue that would be generated from rates that would be allocated to debt service, along with the system development charges, that would pay the sewer debt off on time per the terms of each of your loans. Obviously, you've subsequently made a change and paid off roughly $5 million of that, and I'll get to that in a minute. A sewer utility repair and replacement reserve, so we recognized at the time that we needed to set aside money to start accruing funds for the capital replacement needs for the sewer utility. There's a number of large ticket items that come fairly lumpy over the near term and longer term time horizon. We seeded that fund with 500,000 and had a policy of putting aside another 100,000 a year indefinitely from operations. Equipment replacement reserve, so this is the vehicles for the police and public works and general city services. Again, we looked at the replacement requirements. We looked at the fleet that you had, the replacement requirements for not just the vehicles, but the other equipment like mowers and other things. And developed a model that said if we put 300,000 in now and put roughly 100,000 a year into that fund over time, that we would be able to replace all of the equipment when they needed to be replaced. And then lastly, the general capital reserve, and this was really a trade-off between this allocation and the sewer utility debt service reserve. Those are obviously the two larger categories. You looked at a list of the different capital projects that might be coming down the pike and identified $4.6 million to be the appropriate amount to put into general capital reserves. So that's how you developed the reserve policies and how those funds were allocated. I'm going to pause here to see if you have any questions either about how these were developed or the amounts and categories specifically. Let me give you a little bit of an insight into what other jurisdictions, at least locally, have in terms of their reserve policies. Ridgefield has sort of their unrestricted operating reserve of two months or 16%. And their revenue stabilization reserve is 10%, whereas yours is 100%. So their total reserve policy target is in the 25, 26% range. They're actually exceeding that. They have roughly 40% in their reserves right now as opposed to their 25% reserve target. Camus has a two-month target, 17% is their specific policy target for all of their general fund reserves. They're actually exceeding that now. They're roughly 25%. Waschugel as well has a two-month operating reserve. It's the only reserve that they have for their general fund, 16%. Battleground doesn't have necessarily a policy target, but they've been reserving about 35% in their general fund reserve. City of Vancouver, two to three months' worth of expenses. Their revenue stabilization reserve is 2.5%. Obviously, it's a much larger amount than you have, but 2.5%. And then in addition, they have an emergency reserve target of 7%. But they also have separate reserves for equipment replacement, separate reserves for liability insurance as well. Quickly here, Clamas reserves were at 34%. Woodlands policy was three months, 25%. Chehalis has a 10% goal, but they've only been able to reserve 7%. So you can see just in comparison with other jurisdictions, your reserve policy targets for your unrestricted general fund reserve and your revenue stabilization reserve are at or significantly exceeding what other jurisdictions, at least in the local area, have. So with that, I'll move on to just a couple of other elements. I hit on some of these earlier, but the sewer fund debt and renewal and replacement funding, again, was targeted to be split between rates and reserves. And that rate increase of $5 per year for the five years was intended to provide the sewer fund's share of that debt service. We had a variety of options available for you. We looked at anything from a, up to an eight or a $9 per year annual increase in the rates to put more of that burden on the sewer rate payers and free up more money for capital. And we also had one where we didn't have any rate increases except for cost inflation and all of the burden was placed on the reserve fund. This was the, the $4.6 million and the $5 per year rate increase was what you had settled on. And the, again, the operations allocation of 100,000 per year to the renewal and replacement fund. Equipment replacement, I mentioned this, provided seed funding, needed annual allocations from the general and sewer funds. We had a model that identified each of the pieces of equipment and vehicles for the general fund, what their replacement cycles would be, what their costs would be at replacement. And, and those were the, that was the data that helped inform that plan. The capital reserve placeholder, at the time, you were looking at a new city hall cost estimate of $6 million, a little bit more than what you paid for the building you purchased in 2018. You were looking at having to come up with significant local share for the sewer extension to the junction. There was a community center that was on the list, economic development incentives, land acquisition for community center, parks, and other properties. One of the things that, that you talked about was having money available for engineering and grant application match. So you could provide, essentially show granting agencies that you had done your homework and, and had anticipated what both the project would look like, but also what the costs would be. And then also updating your capital facilities planning, doing things like the, the sub-area plans up at the junction, the Timmin Road sub-area plan and the planned action ordinance for downtown. So those were all things that were anticipated when you did your reserve policies back in 2013. But as you know, a lot has happened since 2014. First and foremost, two card rooms have closed. So at the time, that 100% revenue stabilization reserve worked out to be about, well, at the time, the card room revenue was 2.7 million. So it was about 1.5 times the card room revenue. The card rooms were 73% of your general fund revenue at the time. Now, the card room revenue last year was 1.3 million. And in the budget, it was intended to be roughly 33% of your revenue. So big, significant change in terms of both the amount of revenue from the card rooms, but also your dependency on the card room revenue. The sewer rates were increased for a couple of years, but then that increase stopped. Part of that was done in conjunction with the decision to pay down $5 million worth of sewer debt in 2016. I think part of that discussion may have missed the need to set aside funds for future capital replacement. And that's, I think, something that, that needs to be understood and planned for more fully. The equipment replacement fund contributions were stopped in 2017. The general fund portion of that, the sewer fund has continued to make its contributions. Obviously, the casino opened in April of 2017. The Kowalski tribe funded the sewer line extension with a latecomer agreement that helps pay, repay the cost of that. So the city wasn't on the line for the cost of the sewer line extension or the interchange, the interchange was built as well. You updated your sewer system development charge. That provides some updated revenue for the payment of the sewer debt. And then lastly, you purchased the TDS building in 2018 for just over $900,000 compared to the $6 million that was anticipated. So a lot of, lot of changes since 2014. Looking at your general fund, so one of the obvious uses of your reserves is to pay for deficits to the extent that you have them. And the first three years after you establish your policies, you actually had over a million two of surplus. So 15, 16, 17, despite some of the challenges that the card rooms had, the revenue actually exceeded the expenses by fairly healthy margins in each of those three years. The last two years, over a million dollar deficit. And then in this year, I'm sort of previewing what we'll show you during the council meeting, but we've updated the forecast and looking at just under a $900,000 deficit in the general fund this year. So combined, looking at all six years, you've used roughly, or will need roughly 564,000 to cover the deficits, the cumulative deficits over these six years. But remember, up until the beginning of this year, you had a surplus of about $300,000. And if you look at that 563,000, that compares to roughly a $4 million revenue stabilization reserve. So you're using, you know, roughly 13% of your reserves if, if in fact, this deficit comes in at the 900,000 range. So benchmarking the reserves that you had at December 31st, 2019, just want to show you this. So you have on your unrestricted general fund operating reserve, the policy target again is 25% of the general fund expense budget. You're actually at 26%. So you're a little over a million dollars were at the beginning of the year in your checking account, your working capital reserve. The revenue stabilization was right at its 100% target, just under $4 million in your revenue stabilization reserve. So effectively, you started the year with your reserves fully funded in 2019, despite the, the challenges that you've had over the last several years. The sewer utility debt service reserve, since you used the $5 million in, to pay off debt, you really no longer need this. Your system development charges and your rates are more than sufficient to pay your annual debt service payment on the remaining bonds. So this money, in my mind, and in some of the modeling that we've done on the sewer side, this money is now available for capital replacement in combination with the $553,000 you have in your utility repair and replacement reserve. So, and you have been contributing the 100,000 a year from operations to that reserve since 2014. So this is one that definitely needs to be revised in terms of a policy. And again, my thought would be that this might be funding that we would want to put towards the capital reserve for the sewer side, once we get a better handle on exactly what that need is going to be over time. And then the equipment replacement reserve, you've effectively been spending down the money that you put in there on a seed basis. It's down to 175,000. You made your contributions for 2014 and 15. I don't believe you made them in 16. And so you've been using this, what was 300 plus whatever was left from the contributions, now down to 175,000, probably enough to satisfy another year or two of replacements. But at some point, there's a cycle there where you need to start contributing funds to pay for the equipment replacement. And then lastly, the general capital reserve is at roughly $4.8 million. And this excludes the impact fees, but does include the real estate excise tax. You've got a couple of large projects coming up. You've got the, the Breezy Creek potential for the construction side. You've got the Stone Creek Drive, which is happening this year. And then obviously, you've got the city hall renovation project as well. So as of the end of 2019, you were just under $11.6 million. I should say, this does exclude the sewer operating and the stormwater operating funds as well. So this is just the, the funds that you have really discretion over on the general services side and the sewer side. And that 11.6 compares back, if you recall, to 17.1, but you've actually, you know, it's five, five and a half million dollars below what you started with, but you paid off $5 million of debt. You bought a $900,000 building. So if you look at the, the cash plus debt reduction in investments, not, there hasn't been a whole lot of deterioration since 2014 in terms of your reserve levels. And one other thing that I'd point out is that this $4 million in your revenue stabilization reserve, I mentioned before that the card rooms were about 2.7 million of revenue in 2014, 2013, $1.3 million last year. So this revenue stabilization reserve, which was really intended to deal with the risk associated with that dependency on that one large revenue source, you know, was one and a half times, a little less than one and a half times the revenue in 2014 and it's 4 million. Now it's, it's effectively three, three times that revenue source. So effectively, you're, you're overprotected, you're, you're more protected now from risks associated with that revenue source than you were back in 2014. So that's all I had in terms of the revenue policy refresher. I guess the, one other sort of closing comment is that you've been fortunate in a number of respects. The capital, the large capital requirements that you were anticipating at the time in terms of the sewer line to the junction, the interchange, your city hall project, those were items that have come to you at much lower cost to the city than had originally been anticipated. So there's been some savings there. You've been able to mitigate what has been a 50% reduction in your general fund revenue and those, in the card room revenue, excuse me. You've taken some actions to do things like you impose utility taxes to help offset that. You've started a sort of stormwater utility. So there has been some action on the revenue side to help offset that. But you've successfully, current year with the pandemic impacts set aside, you have been fairly effective at mitigating what was a fairly significant reduction in your general fund revenue without having to dip into, at least yet, significantly into your revenue stabilization reserve. So I'll stop there. And ask for comments, questions, feedback. and ask for comments, questions, feedback in terms of revisions you'd like to see in your reserve policies in this budget cycle.
Hi Paul, Doug here. Just, just first thing that comes to mind on the revenue stabilization reserve, even though we are three times the, the projected revenue from the card rooms, with all the uncertainty that's going on out there and especially trends among card rooms in, in the state of Washington, I think we need to keep that pretty well funded.
I don't disagree. I think that there, you know, maybe some discussion on what well-funded means. So what is the right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not proposing a specific number. I'm just saying that we need to talk this one over very, very thoroughly.
I agree with you, Doug. We just watched them close for three months and their future is just as uncertain as it was before that. So I, I think, I think you're on the right track.
Buzz, what are your thoughts? I'm just curious.
Randy, you were talking. Are you on mute?
If you're using your phone to call in, you may have been muted by the administrator.
I think he has to enter a PIN.
Randy, were you going to try that?
I've, I've sent a couple requests for him. It says to send an audio PIN, so hopefully he might get one.
Hey, you can hear me now.
We can hear you now.
Okay, yeah, wouldn't, wouldn't let me put the audio PIN in. I remember when we came up with this policy and divided up all these buckets and it's the, I agree with Paul that the sewer utility debt service reserve could move into the sewer capital replacement. But we also really seriously need to try to fund that equipment reserve or replacement as well. I remember that we had a very painful year when we had to buy a couple cop cars and there was, you know, nothing there and we couldn't have a bake sale. But, yeah, the equipment reserve, those reserves, and I'm, I'm concerned about the wastewater treatment plant and the membranes. So I would, I could see that money moving over, give us a little more cushion in there for when that comes and any future growth we need. That's all I have, Paul.
Paul, with the development at the school and how those costs are going to be apportioned, how big of an impact will that have to the city?
So the development agreement has you paying your share over five years. And it, there's a sort of a horse trading. You're, you're giving them, you're paying your share and then you're giving them a little bit of a credit for, excuse me, the system development charges. So it works out to just 100,000, a little over, I think 160. I've got it written down in my other presentation a year. So it's, it's manageable. It's even more manageable, given the fact that your system development charge revenue is coming in so strongly. I think, previewing what we've had here, and I'll probably be corrected when I get to it, but I think your system development charge revenue year to date is over 400,000. Your debt service was 260. So again, I think Councilmember Williams and Boff are correct in that, you know, we need to look fairly closely at that sewer capital replacement plan and make sure we understand even if we can't necessarily, don't want to, can't fund it fully, know what the, the gaps are. So I think that's, that's one of the areas that that we'll be doing some work on during this budget cycle.
Yeah, I agree. That will be a key area for us to, to pay close attention to in terms of funding and being best positioned as far as future, well, any type of development as far, even though development, for the most part, is required to pay for itself. When we're looking at, you know, just as we did with the school, how do we sit down with the larger developers that and make it a win-win for the city and the developer to get that kind of business here?
And I know Matt has been working on, you know, updating that capital plan, including the membrane replacement. There's a phase three, or I can't remember what the phase numbers are, but there's expansion requirements and there'll also be some city obligations, you know, for the, some of the city obligations with respect to replacing some of the pump stations and a lot of major maintenance at least.
I've forgotten what the percentages of, you know, we still have some older lines that, that I'm sure need to be replaced over time that, and those costs won't be decreasing by any means. So we'll, we'll rely on Matt's guidance there too for those costs and general estimates.
So I'm hearing sort of two areas of emphasis from the council. One is to, while it's great to have us meeting our revenue stabilization reserve target at the beginning of the year, we know that 2020 is going to likely draw on that. And where we are with that number still needs to be rationalized with the risk that we face with the card rooms going forward. And so I think we'll have some more discussion on, you know, to the extent that there are any proposals to use any of that revenue stabilization reserve in the 2021 budget. There will be a complimentary justification or rationale provided with that, that the council can agree to, or at least see what the rationale is. And the second is looking at the sewer utility, cleaning up the debt service reserve, making sure that we understand if we need to set aside any money for that, which I don't think you do. But more specifically focusing on the capital plan and the capital schedule and what, what the needs are and where the funding sources are going to come to meet those needs.
So Paul, we're looking at a significant deficit for this year. So we're going to have to dip into that stabilization, will we not?
Yes. So that's what I was mentioning before is that that previewing what you'll see in the council finance staff report, but that's, that's where we're at. I'm hopeful that it won't be that bad, but that's the number that, that we're using right now. And, you know, that we would drop that 3.9 down to 3 million. 3 million is still 75%. And again, you go back to Ridgefield's target is 10%. You know, City of Vancouver's target is 2.5%. So I don't want to, I understand the need to balance the risk with, and you're unique in terms of the dependency. But it's, it's still a fairly healthy revenue stabilization reserve. Even at $3 million, you could go, you know, two and a half years without any card room revenue ostensibly. But you, you know, obviously, the, the purpose of the revenue stabilization reserve is to, A, help with blips like, like we'll have this year with a closure that nobody could have anticipated. The other is to, and partly what it was used for before is to give you time to implement policies that respond to the reduced revenues. So, you know, you, you did adopt utility taxes. You did create a stormwater utility. There are other options that you can choose to mitigate that damage. And what the revenue stabilization reserve allows you to do is to go through that in a thoughtful way, engage the public. You know, you don't have to solve that problem tomorrow. You can do that. Again, you know, sometimes a property tax initiative takes a full year before you get the revenue. So even though the voters may have approved it in, you know, August, you won't get the revenue until the next April. So it gives you a chance to, to thoughtfully consider and then implement any mitigation measures.
Well, thank you, Paul. Another great report.
Well, thank you for the input and we'll convene the Budget Advisory Committee next month and will likely come back to you with a workshop as well. We're trying to get a little bit of a head start on things, although forecasting in this environment is a little bit challenging where, but with Maria on board, we're hopeful on the, you know, city side, the expense side to get a pretty good handle on, on where we have been and also where we will likely be in 2021. So we'll put our heads together and try and get some information flowing a little bit earlier this year than, than last year and convene the Budget Advisory Committee and most likely have additional council workshops along the way.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, then we will take a break and reconvene at 6:30 for our regular meeting.
This conference will now be recorded.
We'll go ahead and call this evening, Wednesday, July 22nd, 2020, the Center City Hall Council Meeting to Order. And we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. Do we have a flag or will we just do a virtual flag?
Want one? I got one.
Sure.
I have one of the, I have one of the office.
Randy's getting one.
There we go.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Randy. Very good. We're nothing if not flexible, right? And this evening, under the Washington Safe Start, we will continue our compliance with the phased reopening of the state of Washington. Council members are attending virtually. The city encourages members of the public to continue attending the meeting via GoToMeeting. And the agendas are published on our website and the civic hub. So please use that to connect for each of our meetings and stay connected. And simply use the nine-digit access code. And I believe we've shuffled our general comments and public hearing comments up to the beginning of the meeting. Sarah or Maria, did we receive any that you're aware of?
Um, yes, we did receive one. Would you like me to go ahead and take roll real quick?
That would be very good of catching for me, Sarah. Someone needs, someone needs to keep me on track.
All right. Councilmember Stimble?
Here.
Councilmember Boff?
Here.
Mayor Protem Servany?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Strubin?
Here.
Okay, perfect. And now I'll move to the public comment. I have one. It's from Jennifer Miller at 600 West E Avenue. "I'm in support of the removal of all blue and yellow ribbons on our bridge. Our bridge is not an appropriate place to display the blue ribbons, which reflects personal views and support. Personal support should be kept on private property. The yellow ribbons are about 19 years past their prime. These ribbons are made on our bridge long after they are brittle, faded, forgotten, and ultimately look like trash. The city of La Center does an amazing job keeping our city free of garbage and our roads maintained. Please let's keep our bridge free of possible division and please let's keep it clean. Thank you." That is all.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks.
And under Mayor's comments. Wait a minute.
Did we already approve the consent agenda?
I'm trying to work through too many different agendas here. Is consent agenda still on for the minutes and everything? At, at one point I saw that that had been pulled. So we will go ahead and approve what was sent out, what was on the, the agenda at one point for minutes. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the July 8th, 2020 meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. I do not have any presentations and proclamations on my agenda. Does anyone else have one snuck on theirs? Okay. Under Mayor's report, I'd like to take a few minutes to introduce everyone to Maria Swinger Inski. Wave it, everyone. Maria has been hired as our new manager of administrative services. And we are very excited to have her on board. I believe Janice informed us earlier. She's been on the job three days. So I'm sure we already have her head spinning with ideas. And I'm going to let Janice do a brief introduction as she spent more time with Maria than any of us have so far. And then let all of us welcome her aboard. So Janice, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So Maria comes to us. Her last position was in Spokane with a community college out of Spokane, and she was in the Colville area and oversaw three of the remote campuses as the manager of those campuses. That included the financial oversight, the hiring of staff, troubleshooting the issues in that regard. That included the financial oversight, the hiring of staff, troubleshooting the issues in that regard as for the non-academic staff. But more importantly, a lot of community relations as well. And any of you who know, that's the farthest northern part, right next to Canada, actually, and very rural. So that's quite a step forward to be able to do that. Prior to that, she also worked for the University of Kansas and then also for the Kansas State Retirement System. They had 115 members and she integrated a new computer process there. But at the, at the University of Kansas, this is really exciting. She worked in the geography, not the geography, the geology department. But most importantly, she worked with a lot of grants and managed a lot of grant, financial management, and really got them back on board with that. She comes very highly recommended. We have actually done a much more in-depth search with this selection process and we're onboarding her very differently so that she has a good foundation. So here are some of the things that Maria likes to do. She loves details. So y'all get ready because she loves them. She loves problem solving. And I have to say, in the three days that she's been on board, she is quick to go and identify a problem and then come up with some solutions. And she's very resourceful in getting some ideas and different ways that we do things. One of our challenges in the city is managing the public records process. It's always been a problem in this city. And so we've already started to talk about, is there some software that can help us with that so that we're timely? And it makes it a little more efficient and easy for staff. So Maria lives in Ridgefield, but she's renting, so we might be able to influence her to look at something in La Center. And she was with her husband there and I am very excited that Maria's come on board. We have had meetings three days in a row, seemingly all day, but we, she's met most of the employees, actually all the employees at this point, and this is her introduction to the city council. And I think you will find her a good problem solver, a good thinker, and very personable. So we want to welcome Maria. I'm thrilled that she's here and I think you all will be as well. So that's, this is Maria.
Welcome, Maria.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Welcome aboard. Did you, would you like to say anything at all? Don't want to put you on the spot. You can say no.
No, you're fine. I am just really excited to be here and I have appreciated the warm welcome that everyone has given me. And I'm just ready to hit the ground running.
Well, we're glad to have you aboard. We need lots of running. We all try to stay as nimble as possible and, as Janice mentioned, look for a lot of creative ways to solve problems and meet our residents' needs and our business owners' needs too.
Yeah, and Maria, Maria's already been introduced to Paul Lewis, of course, but also Teresa, who's helping us with getting things back on track. So I think that's a really, I mean, within the first day or two, we facilitated those introductions and questions. So that's been great. Been really good.
Well, welcome. We are here if you have questions. All right. I believe you all received a letter earlier today. It is a letter that's going to be sent and signed by the majority of the cities within Clark County to Secretary Wiseman and Clark County Board of Health. And if you'd like, I can read the most current copy to keep everybody up to breast or you can all confirm that you received it and had a chance to read it. But I think for the, those that are participating via the Zoom call, my preference would be to just quickly read through it. And then we'll be looking for council discussion and a motion for approval. So we can join with the other cities as well and get this taken care of. They're shooting for Friday. But Secretary Wiseman, Clark County Board of Health, recently, city and county councils in Clark County received a request from Southwest Washington League of United Latin American Citizens to identify and treat systemic racism as a public health crisis. This request has been made by similar organizations across Washington and the United States. As the COVID-19 pandemic has shown a bright light on health disparities of people of color in our county, our state, and our nation, recent COVID-19 case count information from the Center of Disease Control and Prevention illustrates the increased risk for people of color. Hispanic or Latino persons have an infection rate approximately four times that of non-Hispanic American Indian persons have an infection rate approximately five times that of non-Hispanic white persons. These numbers are clear and very dramatic. They also point to structural elements of our communities which have created the foundation for this crisis. To best study the causes, impacts, and potential solutions for disparate health outcomes linked solely to race, the mayors and councils of our cities are looking to pledge public health officials, are looking to our public health officials who are best suited to lead acknowledgement and examination of these issues. Our cities do not have health departments. We therefore lack the expertise and the authority to declare a public health crisis. That expertise resides in the health departments and authorities of Washington State and Clark County. Therefore, we are asking both the Clark County Board of Health and the Washington State Secretary of Health to use your expertise and resources to acknowledge the crisis, identify the root causes, and suggest policy solutions in a collaborative fashion. Already in the state of Washington, the boards of health in King and Pierce Counties have formally acknowledged systemic racism as a public health crisis and started a focused examination of policies and practices which have increased health outcome disparities linked solely to race. We are asking that you examine this issue on behalf of our communities. In the midst of this pandemic, our individual health depends more than ever on the health of our neighbors and whole community. But not every community has been impacted by this health crisis in the same way. The racial disparities in who is getting sick and who is able to recover make it clear that work must be done to find public health solutions that raise the opportunity for every person, regardless of race, to be healthy. Thank you for your help and your service to our communities during this crisis. We look forward to your reply. Discussion?
Well, the letter is asking for an investigation and for facts, and you can never go wrong with all the facts. So better to have facts than a lot of speculation and conjecture. So I think we should pursue it.
Other comments?
Well, I feel like I'm, can you guys hear me and see me?
We can.
I see you, John. Do we know what the impact of this is? Like, what are we, what are we signing up for? What, what's going to be evaluated? Are... I'm trying, having trouble reading it and seeing you guys at the same time.
The letter coming from all of the cities is asking both at the Clark County level and at the state level to declare that the situation to be public, considered a public health. So that those agencies can then do the much-needed discussion, research, and evaluation of how to proceed as a county and as at statewide level. Throughout Washington, you're going to see different impacts based on the demographics naturally. And this gives both counties and the state that ability to really assign the funding that will be necessary to really dig into what needs to be done and what areas need to be addressed and what priority and how we proceed in a more unified fashion across the state. Does that help?
And the intention is that there will be one letter that all cities involved will sign, not individual letters from each city?
Correct. Any other questions? We entertain a motion?
I move that the council approve the proposed letter to the Clark County Board of Health and the Washington State Department of Health.
I'll second that.
All right. Then moved and seconded to authorize, well, I guess in this case, you need to authorize the Mayor Protem and the mayor, depending on his schedule, to proceed with signing this in time for their Friday target date. So forgive me for that, Doug.
That's quite all right.
Did you want to edit your motion a little?
I didn't, I didn't propose it the right way. Would you like me to restate that?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Record, Doug.
I move the city council authorize the mayor and/or Mayor Protem to sign the letter to be sent to the Washington State Department of Health and to the Clark County Board of Health.
Now second.
Thank you. Motion and a second on the table to proceed with authorizing the mayor or Mayor Protem to sign the letter from the cities in Clark County addressed to Secretary Wiseman at the State Washington Department of Health, as well as the Clark County Board of Health. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I can't hear. Tom, are you still on?
I am. Can you not hear me? Hello?
Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. I have under the mayor's report a COVID-19 update. I can give you my perspective. The numbers are growing again. And it's definitely not a trend we want to see happen, but I think we were all somewhat cognizant that when restrictions were lightened and summer approaching with people out, out and about and interacting with more groups, that it was going to happen. Nevertheless, I think from our elected positions, we, it's really important for us to take a position of educating people on wearing their masks, adhering to the guidelines, as difficult as it may be, it has been proven to help reduce the spread. So if we're going to be out in, in public settings, the mask becomes very, very important. We don't know who we're interacting with, who we're coming, walking by that has health amenities. And, you know, it's just, it's a good thing to do. I work with people each and every day that have been impacted. So, you know, you'll probably have to pull me off of the pulpit here a little bit because I see how important it is for us to really take those individuals into consideration in what we're doing. We feel fine, but, you know, by us being fine and many of us are, are, you know, not showing any or feeling any symptoms whatsoever, and that's becoming a bigger factor. So let, let's be cautious and cognizant. And when we see situations or drawn into dialogue, really help people understand that it's not about infringing on people's rights. It's not, it's about trying to get us past this crisis mode and back to some sense of normalcy in our everyday activities for everyone. So that is my COVID-19 update. And I'll stop right there. Bronson, do we have an attorney's report?
Well, following up on the COVID update, I'll let you know. When we last met, which was on July 8, the governor signed another proclamation extending the prohibition on in-person meetings for councils. So that extension now goes through, through August 1. And the modifications to the requirements of the Public Records Act also are extended through August 1. So I think this has now been the seventh or eighth extension. And like you just pointed out, Mayor Protem, the numbers don't seem to be going in the right direction, so we'll likely see another extension come August 1. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Bronson. Yeah, it really is up to us to get those numbers headed in the right direction. Councilmember Boff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The July CTRAN board meeting was scheduled on the 14th of this month. And two significant items came up at that meeting. The board approved a resolution authorizing staff and a consultant to begin the negotiation process to acquire small sections of property for the bus rep and transit stations on the Mill Plain project. The newly acquired properties will be dedicated to the city of Vancouver as rights of way. And the, the other item began with an executive session regarding CEO Sean Donahue's annual evaluation. And when the board came under the executive session and went into public session, they, they voted to accept Sean's offer to waive his guaranteed 2.5% salary increase for this year. And they did awarded to him a new five-year contract. The board is extremely pleased with Mr. Donahue. I have met with him two or three times now. The guy's got a lot of energy. He's a hands-on guy. He's, he's very impressive. And I can see why, why the board appreciates the work that he's been doing for them for the, for the three years that he's been with CTRAN. So, and that's all I've got tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boff. Councilmember Stimble?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Williams?
I've got nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Strubin?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right. I don't have anything to add either as far as my other hat, Councilmember Servini. So we will move on. Staff reports. We have community developments. And there's Mr. Swetson.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. Nice to see you all this evening. And Sarah, if I could have you move to the map. First page of the map and enlarge that. Just going to walk through a few project updates that we have for you this month. The first is project number three, which is on the east side of town along Lockwood Creek. And this is formerly was the Lockwood Meadows Annexation, and it's now the Hung Lockwood Annexation. So it's a 20-acre parcel. There was a previous transaction that was contemplated, but now there's a new attempt to annex the property and develop it. And so we've received a 10% request to initiate the annexation, and at this point, we anticipate it coming before council at your next meeting on August 12. Next project update is number seven, and that's La Center Middle School. And on this one, the pump station design drawings have been approved, and the building pad for the school is being graded and plumbing to the building is beginning to be constructed. Up at the junction, number eight, so that's the next map, Sarah. You can scroll down, and then we'll have to go back and forth and apologize. So project number eight there at the La Center Junction, that's the Minute Management Project, and we're anticipating a final site plan and engineering plan submittal anytime, really. They had their hearing back in May, and that was subsequently, the record was closed in June and was approved by the hearings examiner, so that one should be moving forward here very soon. Next one, Sarah, if we can roll back up to the other map. There we go, right in the middle of the page there is project number nine. This is the Schwarz B&amp;B, and a pre-application conference was held on July 14th to discuss a variance issue and to discuss a site plan review. Next project is number 14, Highland Terrace. That's out in the northwest part of the city. And on this one, the developer is seeking an amendment to the development agreement, which would extend the expiration of the plat. And this is likely to come before the council either in August or September. The city has requested some updates. They attained original, their preliminary plat approval was originally given back in, I believe, 2006. And so since then, of course, some conditions have changed locally, and so the city has asked for an updated traffic report and a few other things to be provided by the developer in conjunction with this request to amend the development agreement. And I believe that we've received a traffic memo from their engineering consultant, I believe today, and so we have some review to do there. Number 15, the Holly subdivision. Nine single-family residential plans have been approved. Number 16, which is Kay's Place, three single-family permits have been approved in 2020, and Nutter is going to begin construction on civil improvements for phases two and three of that development. On number 17, Riverside Estates, installation of the storm and sewer has been completed on Northwest 13th Street. I think in my notes it says 113th Street, but it's 13th Street. And the sewer main construction has begun on Larson Drive. Forty building plans have been approved. Six homes have been given occupancy, that's in phase one. And the development agreement, of course, was conditionally approved by the council for the Phase Four Park at your June 24th meeting. On number 22, this is the Bellica Town Homes. It's a four-town home site plan, and that's at Seventh and Cedar. And this project was placed on hold on July 10th to accommodate the need for a variance and some additional submission there from the applicant. And then number 23 is the Stone Creek East Mason Short Plat. And so documents have been submitted for pre-application conference, and the plat map doesn't reflect code and needs to either be revised or go through a variance process. A pre-application was scheduled for the 21st, provided the representative could have changed the plat by then, but I believe that's been postponed. And finally, on citywide projects, the Shoreline Master Program, that was discussed with the Planning Commission at their July meeting, and I need to get with our planner, Ethan, and get an update on that, but we'll have more to come on the Shoreline Master Program update next month. Are there any questions, council?
Jeff, on project number 14, Highland Terrace. With the original approval back in 2006, that wouldn't include the changes that have come before us and approved for lighting and a number of other things as well. So is that addressed when you go through this process?
Yes, that's what staff are addressing with the applicant at this time, is accounting for any substantive changes in development standards or other code since the original plat approval. And so we expect to have more for you when it comes before you for consideration on that.
Right, thank you. My other question was on project 23. That is, that's right across from the high school, correct?
That's correct.
And that's pretty steep terrain, and if I recollect, which oftentimes I don't properly, in '95, '96, when we had the flooding, there was a lot of erosion along that area. So depending on what they're...
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
So I'm a little curious as what they're planning on doing there?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what they're planning to do. We don't have, again, we haven't had the pre-application conference that they've applied for it, but my understanding is that they would develop the upland areas close to Highland Road. So I think the rest of the site is pretty encumbered because Breezy Creek goes through there, and of course, there's some steep slopes and things that they wouldn't be able to develop on.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Jeff?
Other question? Yes?
Jeff, number nine, is that on Aspen? Is that like above 10th? There's a long, narrow strip of property there with a couple old houses?
Yeah, I think there's a, currently there's a single-wide trailer on the property.
Oh, okay, okay, no, what I'm talking about, yeah, there's a single-wide trailer. This is the Schwarz B&amp;B. I'm thinking above 10th Street, if there's any activity on that, because that land was for sale in there. On Aspen above 10th?
Yeah, I'm not sure with any activity up there, Councilmember Williams.
I think there's about five acres, isn't it? Wasn't that what it was, Doug?
Yeah, I think it is, Randy. In fact, I saw a real estate ad for that property just about three or four weeks ago.
Yeah, the signs are down, so that's why I was wondering if there was something going on.
Yeah, and they promoted, it was five something acres, you're right. That's the number that was, that appeared in the advertisement.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't seen a formal application to do anything with the land at this point.
Yeah, there's two, Jeff, there's two houses on it, both of them, the one at 10th and Aspen's definitely a scraper, and the other one is probably a scraper as well.
It's funny you mention that. No, the advertisement even indicates that both the houses need to be torn down.
Okay, that's, that's fine. That trailer that's on the Schwarz property, is that going away?
Number nine? I would have to, I'd have to refer back to the original application. It's been in flux a little bit, because I know what they wanted to do was do a boundary line adjustment and construct the B&amp;B on one of the parcels. So I don't know if that involved retaining the single-wide or not.
They were previously renting that, and the inside of it is, to me, poses a lot of health issues. The flooring was what I would deem as unsafe, and there was mold. So... It's one of those properties that's always been concerning.
Yeah, I'm aware there's some history with that property. Okay, other questions, council?
Good report.
Thank you very much, Jeff. You're a busy guy. All right, I think this brings us back to Paul. For finance staff reports on the second quarter. Welcome back.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. For you tonight, we've got the second quarter financial update. I've got about a dozen slides. It does include another rough estimate of the general fund forecast for the rest of 2020, as best as we can put it together. And like I said, about a dozen slides, so we'll get through this. If you have any questions as we go along, please speak up, or we can wait till we're in, whatever your preference. First up, just a slide on the general fund revenue. This oriented to this, the major revenue sources are down the left-hand side, and across the top, we've got the second quarter 2020 revenue to date, the full 2020 budget, the percent that the actual is to the budget to date, comparison to the second quarter of 2019, and again, the full year for 2019, and then the percentage that the second quarter was for 2019. So this gives you a side-by-side comparison, both to the budget as well as to the prior year. I like to focus really on the far right two columns, and then that second quarter's percent of the 2020 budget, those are the ones that I like to focus on. So starting from the, looking at property taxes, you can see $280,000 through the second quarter, 55% of the total revenue. We talked at the end of the first quarter, we thought that there might be both some deferral as well as some delinquencies in the first half of the year. The taxes weren't due until the first part of June. But the county treasurer sent out a note saying that they received 53.5% of their full levy on the first April payment, or excuse me, the first payment that was due between April and June, and that was within 1% of where they were last year. So her observation was that potentially the delinquencies won't be as much as some of us have been anticipating. So that was some positive news. You can see, though, that the revenue source is running behind last year by about $35,000, so focusing on these last two columns. I wouldn't get too worried about that at this point, really focusing more on what the county treasurer suggests overall collections have been, but you'll see when we get to the forecast that we are expecting a little bit of a drop, despite the performance in the first half of the year. Utility excise taxes run me at about 40.5% of the budget. That's not unusual for the utility taxes to run at that percentage. You can see, although last year we were just about 50% of the budget, but almost matching dollar for dollar, within $500 of where we were in 2019 through six months on the utility excise tax. So it's like we may not make our budget, but we're running really close to where we were last year. A lot of this depends on water usage, depends on the weather. Electricity usage also depends on a number of different factors, so it'll be interesting to see where we end the year on the utility excise tax. Sales taxes been a bright spot, I've got a couple of slides on that, actually, one more slide on that coming up later. But at 43% of the budget through the first half of the year, this budget does include some amount for the La Center Middle School construction, which hasn't started yet, so this 40, being under 50% doesn't concern me a lot. You can see in the, last year, we were running just about the same percentage of the budget through the full year. You can see, running a full 48.5% above last year, $67,000 consistently, month over month, we've been beating the revenue on the sales tax from last year, including the last two months, where we've had the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. Criminal justice sales tax, it's just a county, your share of the countywide sales tax collections for criminal justice, coming in well, again, almost spot on to where they were last year. And then two not-so-good stories, the gambling tax pull tabs, coming in $641, well below last year, well below where we would expect to be on the budget. Good news is, it's not a large revenue source to begin with. And then the gambling tax from the card rooms, clocking in at $205,000 for the first half of the year. You'll see the note down at the bottom, the asterisk, there is deferred revenue per the taxpayer agreements of $113,000. So really, we need to, for apples-to-apples comparison, you need to add these two together, and you'd be in the $317,000, $318,000 range. But at 15.8% of the budget, you can see we're down $427,000 from last year. So this is their closure, being a 30%, 33% of your revenue base, and having them close for several months created a significant dent in the city's revenue stream this year. Countering that, to some extent, has been the positive development on the permitting side, both the land use as well as the building permit side, coming in strong, $262,000 year to date, 50% of the budget, $178,000 more than last year. So last year, at this time, we were at $83,000. Two large projects there, obviously, the middle school is one, and then there's an apartment project as well that's in for plan review at this point. Intergovernmental also performing well, a little bit better than budget, a little bit higher than last year. This relates to the city being eligible for state assistance, it's a sales tax supplement from the state. This year, it didn't get it last year. Charges for goods and services, again, another permit-related, development-related revenue source, coming in 15% above last year, 63% of the budget, so well above that 50% mark. And then fines and forfeitures and miscellaneous coming in below budget and well below last year. Roll them all up, you're at just under $1.4 million of revenue, 37% of the budget. If you add the $113,000 of deferred revenue, that climbs a little bit, that 34% climbs a little bit to 37, this comes closer to 40%. But again, you can see well below last year. If you add that 113, you'd be at about $130,000 below last year in terms of total revenue. So the reduction on the card rooms has been made up, at least to some extent, from the revenue from the permits and development side. Just looking specifically at the sales tax, the revenue of the last couple of months for May and June were actually over $30,000 a month, which is sort of a benchmark that we look at for fairly healthy sales tax. Those are 60% above last year. So you can see where we were in 2017 was due to the construction of the... So you can see where we were in 2017 was due to the construction of the sewer line to the junction, and you can see where we were in 17 and 18, running, trending, continuing to trend, well above 19, 2019 and 2018, but still below the high watermark of 2017. On the building permit side, this is a slide, the data source for this is the Census Bureau, and this is single-family permits that have been issued. I use this revenue, this data source because it's consistent over time and comparable to other jurisdictions. And you can see where we are, again, running well above the last three years on the single-family permits that have been issued. And then when you look a little bit deeper at the information that community development has, there's been 60 single-family permits either issued or under review through the end of June. In addition, we've got that six-building multifamily complex that has 144 units. Total those together, you're over 200 compared to your budget of 180. And then I checked in with Sarah a week or so ago, and we had already received seven applications in July through the 14th, so didn't look like things had slowed down much, if at all, in the last couple of months. So permit activity, at least on the single-family side, continues to move forward. And that's positive. You can see, you would expect that after looking at the revenue report I just went through. On the expense side, the expenses came in a little bit higher in the second quarter than we had in the first quarter, same kind of presentation here across the top, different comparisons to both budget and to the prior year, and then the departments listed down the side, this is the general fund. Couple of things to note here, finance running a little bit higher than the budget, you would expect with the budget at 67%, but running fairly close to where we were last year, just $3,600 above last year's amount. Significant expenses in finance related to getting the city's last three years financial statements, financial reports compiled and finalized, ready for the auditors, as well as some additional work done on grants and some capital revenue sources from Teresa Johnson CPA primarily. But there's also other consultant costs in there, my costs are in there, human resources, IT, so finance is sort of a catch-all for a number of other categories as well. Legislative coming in higher than 50% of budget, a little bit higher than last year. Much of this is related to the upfront cost of your liability insurance. That's a major expense for city council and the legislative function. Police, running a positive trend, 46% of the budget, so below 50%. There's been a vacant position there since May, although there's been some overtime as well. You can see, running actually 19,000 below last year. So again, a positive performance on the expenditure side from police. Planning, another tale, I think this is a story that you've been tracking for the last several months with the beginning of the adjustment to the consultant contract, running at 81% of the budget, 229,000 above last year. I've got another slide on the revenues and expenses for the building, community development function, and I would attribute a lot of this expense to sort of some loss leaders and the planning side. The planning functions that, a lot of the activities that you're undertaking, including annexations, public hearings for development, development agreements with the school district, even things like the, your annexations, the pre-applications, those types of things are generally time-consuming and costly, but loss leaders. You process annexations at a loss because you're looking to bring properties in and gain the property tax revenue and new development, those types of things. So I wouldn't, most jurisdictions don't look for their planning activities, the long-range planning and the current planning activities to recover revenues that match their expenses. They do expect that on the building side. So to the extent that you're having a lot of both long-range planning and land use planning activities, they're both going to run expenses, but also the revenues won't quite keep up. And I'll show you that in a minute. Positive news on the public works side, coming in well below 50% of the budget on both counts combined, coming in well under last year's amounts as well. All-in, running about 127,000 above last year, 6% coming in at 54% of the budgeted amount, so just in excess of that 50% expectation through half of the year. Total of $2.1 million of expenses. When you compare that to the revenues of just under 1.4, you show a deficit year-to-date of the 771,000. Again, that doesn't reflect the deferred revenue from the card room gambling taxes, and so that is a part of that total. You can see last year, it was, you can see we had a deficit year-to-date of 400,000, so it's not unusual to run a larger deficit in the first half of the year. Typically, the sales tax revenues and the utility tax revenues come in a little bit stronger the second half of the year than the first half, but overall, the deficit has grown considerably from the first quarter report that we showed you, and you'll see my forecast coming up in a couple of slides.
Real quick, Paul, I do, I do have a question. And I'm not sure where this adds up, but in the finance there at the top, you're showing a difference from 2019 to 2020 in the second quarter of $3,576 negative, right?
Yeah, that's year-to-date.
Okay, what I'm trying to figure out is that in the middle or so of May and then in June, we wrote Teresa Johnson's firm, $52,368. We didn't write that last year for them, so I'm trying to figure out, that's a, that's a big chunk, and then we're only $3,000 off from last year's numbers, you know, a difference. Is that all included into the finance department of what she's doing then?
Yes, so a couple of comments. One, there were likely some consultant costs in the 2019 as well, so it would take some research to sort of pick apart apples-to-apples comparisons. And then the cost associated with Teresa Johnson's work, you're, you're having a three-year audit this year, so you had to compile three years' worth of financial reports, so there was some time there assisting staff pulling that together. And then, as I mentioned before, really some work focused on the roundabout grant was one, closing, helping close out the roundabout grant, focusing on the dedicated capital revenues and making sure those were adequately accounted for in preparation of the audit. So effectively, she was doing a lot of pre-work for your, for your three-year state audit that's coming up, but she's also been doing some routine work supporting the operations. The other thing I would point to is there's some salary savings in this number as well that, I think you were fully staffed for most, if not all, of 20, the first half of 2019. So I think there's both some comparisons that would require a little bit more research to get you honed in on what the differences were between salaries and benefits and consultant costs.
Yeah, because that's quite a chunk of change there, being cut to her firm in less than 60 days and then only to have a $3,000 difference between the two quarters from 19 and 20. And in, what my question was though, is that all this expense, I understand what she's helping out, but the different areas, are they all being expensed into the finance department's expense report? Is that where they're all going, her entire salary?
Yes, and, and thank you for that too. I think there, one of the research projects that Maria may be able to pursue is, to the extent that Teresa's working on how your capital revenues are allocated and your concurrency, so concurrency is a spending time limit requirement for your impact fees, to the extent that she's doing work specific to those capital revenue sources and helping you both account for and plan for those, there's the potential that those costs could be charged appropriately to those capital funds. So I think right now, all of those expenses are in finance, and I think there's a potential for some, maybe not a lot, but some of those expenses for work that was done specifically on those capital projects, the roundabout obviously being one, where those, those expenses could be moved out of finance, out of the general fund and towards those capital funds.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before I move a little bit more detail on what's behind these, at least for the planning side? So I compiled the building permit fees, the plan check fees and the land use fees, so that's the current development revenues, and then the total planning department expenses, which includes the long-range planning. So all the work done to support the planning commission is included in the expense side, whereas the revenue side are just those active development permits that are paying fees. And you can see the comparison here, year-over-year on the revenue side, this is just pulling information from the prior revenue slide, significant increases in, in permit fees and plan check fees. Land use fees are actually down a little, year-over-year, down significantly, year-over-year, it's a smaller number. And so the, but the total revenues are up almost 200,000 year-over-year, and that helps offset what was a 229,000 increase in the expense side. So on a sort of comparison, revenue to expense, even though the expenses are up, the revenues are up as well, running about a $30,000 difference on a net basis. And those 2020 expenses also include expenses related to the termination of a, of a former employee. So those are one-time expenses that are included here. And I'll just maybe reiterate and clarify some of the comments I made earlier, to the extent that you've got planners that are talking to developers about potential developments, potential annexations, you know, things that are sort of early in the pipeline, or even things that are like annex, real annexations, the revenues are never going to match the expenses associated with that type of activity. And so, again, given the fact that you've got a lot of, you know, potential tire-kicking, people with transactions wanting to know what would happen, you know, what-ifs, there are expenses associated with those inquiries, then there's no revenue yet to offset those expenses. So while this is a considerable deficit, it's really a function of where you are in the pipeline. There's probably an opportunity to increase some of those fees a little bit. I remember we did the study in 2018, 29, I think, early 2019, that suggests there's a little bit of room there, but not a lot. This is more a state of the, the practice that these early pipeline activities aren't going to be. So I wanted to give you a little bit more flavor of comparison of the, the planning side, since it's a big chunk of both the revenue and the expense side.
Paul, I have a question regarding land use fees. I see that they, they declined and the other, the permits and plan checks, what would be an example of a, of a land use fee?
So the site plan for the, the junction, I'm not sure if that fee was paid last year, so the junction development, site plan review is, is a good example. An annexation fee is a, is another land use fee. Site plan's the most typical subdivision, subdivision would be a, a land use fee.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff probably has a better sense, but I think, I think those are the, the major ones, subdivisions and site plans. Any other questions on the planning detail here? See if I've got any other notes here. Yeah, this has noted a couple of things at the planning commission, there was a Pacific Highway pedestrian study, research that was done, so those types of things, you'll have expenses, but not necessarily revenues. So moving on to the sewer and stormwater operating funds, mostly positive news here, revenues coming in from charges for services at just under 500 and, just over 572,000, 45% of the budget, a little bit below last year, not sure exactly why that would be the case. Again, it's, it's not significant, under 2%. And then miscellaneous, these are the fees that other jurisdictions pay you for your dryer, I think you're, you're serving, at least, I think you're serving the tribe and one other jurisdiction as well. Those are down as well, $6,800, but not significant reduction in terms of revenue year-over-year. And then when you look at the expense side, there's also been a reduction on the expense side that has actually exceeded the reduction on the revenue side. You're at 44% of the expenses through 50% of the year, 29,000, 8% below last year. So on a net basis, you're actually, net revenue of $238,340 on a budget of 222,000. So, but this doesn't include any of the $300,000 transfer that will be made, most likely in the third quarter of the year. If you were to take out 150,000, which would be half of that 300, so that 238 would be 88,000, which is again, a good positive cash flow, positive net revenue for the storm, excuse me, the sewer fund. With that revenue, we expect to have this 222,000. If you recall our discussion from the workshop, there's 100,000 of that that goes towards the repair and replacement reserve, and so we're, we're building up reserves for capital, and that's what that money is earmarked for. And you can see the net revenue last year through the first half of the year was also fairly strong, positive. This 361,000 included some legal fees reimbursement from the tribe, so we're not going to have really good apples-to-apples the second half of the year on the miscellaneous sewer fund revenue, but the, the net revenue will be really the, the thing that we look at. And then have a line item here on the capital side, system development charge revenues, 499,000 year-to-date on a budget, full year budget of 326,000, and compared to 117,000 last year. So the, the system development charge revenue from the development applications, just up significantly the first half of 2019 or 2020. And this compares to, you made your debt service payment of 260,000 roughly, which this helps fund, so, and that was an annual debt service payment, so you can see, well exceeded the, the expenditure requirement for the cap, excuse me, for the debt service side. Stormwater fund, lots of positive revenue here, 93,000 of revenue, 23,000 of expenses, about half of that's a share of a pickup truck. So 70,000 of net revenue, you weren't operating the stormwater utility last year, the first half of the year. I did talk with the public works director, he expects the operating expenses to pick up the second half of this year, and that's typical of, of public works, especially with the stormwater, the summer and fall are the peak seasons for getting work done. And I understand that the street sweeping had been on hiatus for a little while as well, and that will be picking up and there'll be an expense associated with, I think, I think you're working with the city of Ridgefield to do some street sweeping. The positive news on both of your utility, enterprise utility funds. So looking quickly at the capital funds, another real strong story here, similar to the system development charges, both your traffic impact fees and your park impact fees are running triple-digit numbers ahead of, of last year, so 424%, 385,000 more in 424%, 385,000 more in traffic impact fees. Park impact fees are running 113,000 more. And even your real estate excise tax, which is real estate transactions. I think one of the things that many of us expected with the pandemic is that the real estate sales would trickle, slow down to a trickle, but they have kept moving. And I don't have any specific information on the center, but this is an indication that our transaction's happening and and you're getting your share of the real estate excise tax from those transactions. So 779,000, almost 600,000 more in revenue year to date through six months than last year from these capital revenue sources. And just a side note, again, referencing back to the workshop discussion. This has, I think, some implications for the capital reserve policy that we've come up with, that you came up with and and how that moves forward. Recognizing that that initial reserve was set up with probably some different assumptions about what the revenue sources would be in these dedicated capital funds and how much you'd have to come up with as a city to support some of the capital projects. So just a side note there. You can see the expenses on the two major capital projects, the Breezy Creek engineering project just getting underway, 180,000, and then continuing expenses on the city hall renovation design and work as well. So lots of net revenue on the capital side through six months. So any questions on the capital update? So next, I want to go through my updated forecast. And again, same caveats that I had in the first quarter. It's very challenging, both this early in the year, but also in this environment to come up with a forecast for the full year that you have a whole lot of confidence in. But to talk through some of the implications on the the forecast, the assumptions on the revenue side. The card rooms, actually, both are open. So one, the palace opened July 1. Last frontier opened July 7. So we have the assumption that they were closed for three and a half months. They're allowed to open at 25% of capacity. That's probably more than 25% of their revenue base. But we started the revenue at 25%, growing that to 85% at the end of the year. That's compared to last year. That puts us at about 650,000 for the year, down 50% of a million three, which was your budget. So anticipating a $650,000 reduction on the gambling taxes. Property taxes, again, despite the positive first half 2020, sorry about that. We do expect some delinquencies to materialize. They may not be as high as this, but we've got an expectation of coming in a little bit under your full amount of your levy for the full year. Utility taxes, since you're running right spot on where you were last year through the first half of the year, we're going to just use your 2019 revenue for the full year as our estimate for 2020. Hopefully, that's conservative. As some of these homes get occupied, you start collecting more utility taxes from those. That'll be a conservative estimate. Development permits, assuming 70% of what we received in the first half for the sort of the non-major projects. You'll see we come in expecting to come in a little bit below budget on those. And then sales tax, I've got a slide on the sales tax. The forecast, 462,000. So this is up well, about probably 60,000 or so from where we were in the first quarter, given the performance that we had in May and June. The significant declines that we expected over what we had been receiving. We thought that things would come in a little bit closer to last year. But we've been exceeding those in May and June. And then in July, we start to add in some revenue from the middle school construction. So there's a a layer on here that just is a continuation of a trend. And then there's a layer that we add based on the the middle school. Running, factoring in a burn rate of about a million to a million and a half spending per month on the middle school. So positive developments there coming in, just below budget and just below 2017, but should well exceed 18 and 19. On the expense side, these haven't changed much at all. The vacant patrol officer began in May. There's been some additional overtime and that will continue. The finance manager position, it was filled, filled three days ago. The accountant position will be held vacant for a period of time until the new administrative services manager gets her a better understanding of the functions. And Teresa Johnson's also doing some policy and procedure work. So council member, Sarah, when I failed to mention that she's helping develop policies and procedures and streamline practices as well. She's working with staff on that. But the professional services are likely to exceed any savings that you materialize from those salary savings. Community development, we spent some time on that before. There is a vacant position there. Higher professional services, more development activity, going to more than offset the savings. Public works, looks like there's going to be some savings there. The seasonal position is not going to be filled. There's also potentially some opportunity to shift some of that cost to required work in the stormwater fund later in the year as well. So if you take those assumptions on the revenues and expenses, property taxes, still expecting them to come in a little bit below budget at 477,000. Hopefully, this will surprise us and we'll know in October and November. Unfortunately, it'll be a little bit late in the game. Utility taxes coming in below budget, but that 271 is is pretty much what we had last year. Retail sales tax coming in a little bit below budget, 2.7%. The criminal justice sales tax, also a little bit below budget. And then pull tabs. Hopefully, it'll be a little bit of a pickup there. A small revenue source again. And then you can see the $650,000 reduction in the gambling and card rooms. This is about 150,000 more than we had in the first quarter estimate for the full year. Licenses and permits, so things picking up a little bit, offsetting some of those declines, although the net here is also negative to budget. But less so than we had in the first quarter estimate. So 520,000 was the budget for licenses and permit, expecting 446. Charges for services, again, another permit related area, actually expect that to come in a little bit above budget. All rolled in, 2.8 million dollars of revenue plus 300,000 in the transfer from the sewer fund gets us to just over 3.1 million. So about 58,000 more than we had at the end of the first quarter. So the increases in sales tax and permit fees offset the 150,000 reduction in the card room revenue. So while it's a an increase, it still is not sufficient to offset the increase in expenses. So on the expense side, expecting finance to come in over budget by 89,000. A lot of that, again, as we talked about, is related to the professional services. Legislative and police should come in under budget. The planning, again, coming in over budget for all the reasons that we've discussed earlier. Public works likely to come in under budget, a vacant position there, deferring some capital projects. And then work in the stormwater utility as well. Total expenses expected to be just at the $4 million level, slightly over budget for the full year, all rolled in. And then comparing that to the 3.1 million of revenues. The updated forecast for the full year deficit is just under $900,000. Again, with 650,000 of that coming from the closure of the card rooms and their slow recovery in their reopening. And that compares to a deficit of 713,000. And just want to reiterate, significant uncertainty in both the revenue and the expense side. I like to try and come in with something that's a little bit conservative on both the revenue and the expense side. So hopeful that we won't reach these levels, but there's lots of uncertainty between here and the end of the year.
So I just, real quick, Paul, just to understand, we are in, I think you're meeting in June. When was that, June 4th, maybe? Pull it back up. When you first came to us with this, June 10. In your June 10 meeting, from the first quarter report to six weeks later, we're almost $200,000 difference in the deficit.
Yeah, so the the June meeting was through the first quarter. So it was just three months, three months worth of data. So right now, we've got six months worth of data. So so that's the difference. The two things happened. One, obviously, we had the extension on the closure of the card rooms, which we didn't anticipate in May when we developed that information. And then also the expenditures on the planning side were, planning and the finance side were a little bit higher than we had anticipated for the second quarter. So yes, those two things combined. The 150,000 in the card rooms plus another 50,000 from other areas.
That's a huge deficit compared to what we forecasted in December.
Yeah, so the budget had a small surplus, but again, the, you know, your tax revenue, 650,000. You know, it's it's directly the impact of the pandemic. Revenue's down 22%. And that's really what's driving your situation. Again, at the workshop, when we talked about this a little bit, that revenue stabilization reserve is 3.9, just under $4 million at the beginning of the year. So there's you know, there's a revenue source, or excuse me, there's a a reserve that's was set up specifically to address short term impacts on revenue source that you're highly dependent upon. So.
Right, but that key word you said, short term. And right now, each time that we've done a budget cycle, we've been a negative number and we've been off by at least 20% every year anyways in our projections. So that short term comes real quick and 3 million, 4 million doesn't last long. And I think in some of your presentations in the past, we were looking at a three or four years and we'd be out of cash.
And we will be yeah, we'll be updating the six year forecast. And I don't think it was three years before. I'll have to go back and check, but I think you know, there is a structural deficit issue that most jurisdictions have. And yeah, we'll we'll inform your 2021 budget discussions with a with a six year forecast. So I just have one more slide here on the capitals budget. And this is just a couple of updates from the last time we went through this. The Stone Creek reconstruction came in at 471 compared to a budget of 580. So that's positive. And then a number of these projects are now on hold. The planned action area, again, is subject to council approval. Not sure, there's still be some work done on that, but there won't be a contract awarded until later. And then, as I mentioned before, the pump station, so instead of 400,000 lump sum, there's actually a a payment that will be made to the school district. And it works out to, my estimate is about 120,000 a year over five years. And this is again, will come from those system development charges. So you had 500,000 of revenue the first half of the year. So it'll come from those system development charge fees that you're receiving. So. So that's the update for the second quarter. I wish I had more positive news, but I would say that, you know, from the sales tax standpoint, there's some positive news from the property tax standpoint. There's some positive news. You're certainly, your development activity is a positive as well. It's just that the card rooms and the dependence on that revenue source and the fact that they've been closed for three months, over three months. So that's the situation that that we have to report.
Yeah, with the potential of being closed again in the near future. It's another thing that we have to be aware of.
Okay.
Thanks, Paul.
You're welcome.
Thorough report as usual. Liz, you're muted.
Thank you, Tom. And that takes us into new business. And we have our amendment number one to alternative tax agreement. And Paul will take us through that as well.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So in front of you is a request to for the council to authorize the mayor to sign amendment number one to the alternative tax agreements with MT and M Gaming and the Palace, Inc. Let me pull up the agreement here. I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking through this specifically. But the if you recall, back in 2018, you provided the customer ordinance providing the authority for the city to enter into the alternative.
Just to pay 10%.
Alternative tax agreements with the two card rooms in the community. And you took advantage of that earlier on. And in March of this year, as we just talked about, the governor passed, excuse me, issued a proclamation that restricted a lot of both social as well as commercial activity, including required the closure of the card rooms. On April 22, the city council approved an alternative tax agreement with the two card rooms, which, among other things, deferred the payment of the tax on the activity from February and March until such time as they were allowed to reopen. On January, excuse me, June 5, Clark County was authorized to move to phase two of the state's reopening plan. And then subsequent to that, on June 12, the Department of Health issued guidelines that provided guidance to the card rooms on what they needed to do to be able to reopen. Those guidelines included restricting occupancy to 25% specific cleaning protocols and other protocols that both customers and employees would have to to manage to. Subsequent to that, the card rooms were able to reopen. The palace opened July 1. The last frontier opened July 7. So it's a positive thing that they were able to reopen. However, the existing alternative tax agreement that council approved in April provided for the first payment of the deferred taxes to be due the month after the governor allowed them to open. And technically, the governor allowed them to open in June. However, because of the requirements that they needed to meet before reopening, they weren't able to reopen until July. So the amendment number one requests that we, that the city move the city and the card rooms agree to move the date of the first payment to the end of August, which is effectively what was implied by the agreement, which is the first, the end of the month after the first month that they're open. the first month that they're, uh, open. Um, all other aspects of the alternative tax agreement remain in full force and effect. It's three payments, three equal payments. Uh, if, uh, uh, under this agreement, those payments would be at the end of August, September and October. Those would come in addition to any revenues that are due on activity that they have in the months, uh, that they're open. Uh, and in addition, all of the taxes will be due before the end of the year regardless. Uh, and late fees would, uh, apply to any of the deferred payment, the payments on the deferred taxes. And, uh, in response to council member Strobin's comment earlier, the, uh, card rooms have, uh, mentioned that they are, uh, have some concern about the potential for, uh, the governor to, uh, move the state back, uh, in terms of the reopening plan. And so I would just, uh, point that out, uh, in the context of this discussion, uh, that this is amendment number one to the agreement. Uh, but there is some concern about, uh, the potential for future restrictions on their ability to operate. With that, again, the, uh, recommendation is that the council, uh, pass a motion authorizing the mayor to sign amendment number one to the alternative tax agreements with MT and M Gaming and the Palace, Inc.
Any additional questions for Paul?
So effectively, there's, there's no impact on the, on the budget for, for, uh, twenty twenty then, is there?
Well, uh, other than the closure, uh, no, this does not have any additional impact, uh, on the budget other than the impact from, uh, not having any revenue, uh, for the months that they were closed.
Okay. Well, Mayor Protem, I moved to authorize that Mayor, or Mayor Protem, to sign amendment number one to the alternative tax agreements with MT and M Gaming and the Palace Incorporated.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded in to authorize the mayor, Mayor Protem, to sign amendment number one to the alternative tax agreements with MT and M Gaming and the Palace, Inc. All those in favor?
All right.
Mayor Protem, do you mind if we do a roll call?
Let's, yeah, let's do this orally so that we have this captured for the minutes and for, um, anyone that's listening. Forgive me, Sarah or Marie.
Maria. Thank you. And do you want me to go ahead and do the roll call or would you like to?
Uh, go ahead and do roll call and we'll take care of it so that you have everything accurately.
Thank you. Councilmember Stimmel?
Yes.
Councilmember Boff?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yes.
Mayor Protem? I'm sorry, what was that?
So then, pardon? I said yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
That was unanimous approval. Thank you, council, and thank you, Paul. And that takes us, um, to the end of our regular meeting, but it appears that we also will be having an executive session. Janice, did you want to, um, summarize that for us and give us kind of a timeline?
Uh, I think we're gonna probably need, uh, a half an hour, um, for sure, because the, of the discussion. So, yeah. So we need to disconnect from this and go to the other executive session as it is on the email that was sent to you. And then we'll go out of the executive session and come back to this one. Okay, everybody?
So what time will we be back in session?
Uh, well, why don't we say twenty-five minutes? So why don't we say eight-thirty? And then if we need more time, so let's be, uh, cause otherwise we have to wait if we finish early. So let's say twenty-five minutes to eight-thirty, is that okay, uh, Mayor Protem?
It works for me. Um, did, is council ready to just go right ahead or does somebody, anybody need a break?
Yeah, we need to go out and come back in, cause we have the attorney waiting, so that's the reason.
Okay.
All right, let's hurry back.
Are we going in right away?
This conference will now be recorded.
Bronson, did I see you talking?
No, I was just saying that now we're ready to go, I think.
Okay. All right, we, it is now eight forty-nine, we're coming back out of executive sessions and, um, going back into our regular meeting. Bronson, for the record, do we need to make a motion, um, or just?
At this point, uh, Mayor Protem, I think the only thing we need to do is a motion to adjourn, cause I don't think there's any more items on the agenda to address.
All right.
Move to adjourn.
I said that.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Good night, everyone.
Hearing no, hearing no opposition, I thank you all for your times tonight.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Bronson.
Good night.